Good, thank you. Okay, so, welcome to our second ever virtual meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. I'm going to call the meeting to order. April 9th, 2020. I am not going to make introductions because you can see all of the folks in the meeting on your screen. We generally start our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. I, again, am going to ask that we dedicate our moment of silent prayer to those that have been lost in Hamilton County to COVID-19. We're going to hear in a minute from the Health Commissioner related to those numbers. So let's take a moment of silent prayer and remember those that have passed. And now, we're going to go to the Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Somer O'Dumas is going to... Yeah, there's the flag. She's got the flag. So, all right, with that, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I think we made it through them. Next, I'm going to move that we approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
I'm moving that we approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Yeah, I seconded it, but you kind of went out.
Yeah, I did. All right, Jackie? We're going to wait for you to call the rule.
Okay, I'm ready now. Commissioner Dreyhouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. We're a little choppy, so bear with us here. So, we have Greg Kesterman with us today, the interim Commissioner of Public Health for Hamilton County. And Greg is going to give us an... Really, it's an update. It's an overview of where we stand today. So Greg, take it away.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Every day at 2:00 p.m., the numbers for COVID cases are updated statewide and here in Hamilton County. Yesterday at 2:00 p.m., there were 5,148 cases with 1,495 hospitalized. Of those hospitalized, we had 472 in intensive care, and a total of 193 people who passed away. Here in Hamilton County, we had 437 positive cases thus far, as well as 81 of those are hospitalized with 13 people passing away. I wanted to share that, as of yesterday at 2:00 p.m., our website now carries a zip code map that includes all of the city of Cincinnati, all of Hamilton County, Springdale and Norwood included as well. So we'll maintain that map. Right now, we're going to be updating it once a week on Wednesdays at 2:00 p.m. We are balancing... My epidemiologists and data teams are balancing the demand for data, and we're also trying to manage the large caseloads. So we're trying to get information out. At Commissioner Dreyhouse's request, we are actively working on getting some demographic data for Hamilton County. The data set that we'll be using is the same data set, ultimately, that is used by the Ohio Department of Health to release their demographic data. So some of those metrics, including race, will be incomplete. The state data shows about 40% missing a race designation. This gets completed while the patient is at the doctor's office, and I think the doctors are kind of managing how quickly they can see a patient. ... of data fields. So we'll work through that, and we'll continue to do some messaging with our medical community to make sure that information is as accurate and complete as possible. Speaking of caseload, I wanted to share, you know, our first case was March 19th. For that first week, we had a couple cases per day. By the second week, we're managing between five and 20 cases per day. And now, we're kind of wrapping out our third week, and we're managing between 10 and 20 cases on average per day, with one day hitting 38 cases. So with each of those individual cases, my team has to do contact tracing and let other individuals know they have to quarantine. The beginning of this week, the state actually shifted. We used to have to call each contact once a day and take their temperature... monitor their temperature. They would report it to our office. Effective on Monday, that's no longer required, although we are now transitioning into doing more monitoring of these presumptive positive cases. So as we know, many doctor's offices, if you have mild symptoms, are not testing the patients. We will begin doing some additional work to help make sure that close contacts of those individuals are also being given the same message to isolate and stay home for 14 days. That is my update. I'd be happy to take any questions.
So, Mr. Reneg was part of the daily briefing yesterday. It was not a daily briefing anymore, but anyway, the briefing yesterday. And so, we had a couple of questions, and Greg, I want you just to quickly elaborate a little bit on each one. So, we had some talk about the stay-at-home order and how the state has put in place a panel that will make a decision as to whether or not... If there's some controversy around it, whether or not a business can stay open or not. So can you... I know you've got some updated information about that.
Correct. So each day, this panel that is... has four individuals on it will be ruling on various disputes when a business feels that they're being treated differently by one county versus another county. Yesterday, the panel heard four... They lumped four cases together about dog grooming, and they ruled that dog grooming is nonessential. And so, the directive then is statewide, that they would like statewide alignment with public health. So, any dog groomers would be required to cease operations. In addition, the state panel ruled on vape shops. So statewide, they would like vape shops to cease operations. So each day, there will be a new set of businesses that are brought before the panel, where they'll work to try and bring clarity to each business type. Today, for example, at 2:00, they will be discussing car washes. The State Department of Health's recommendation to the panel is touchless car washes should be allowed, but we'll find out more details on what the panel decides at 2:00. In addition, they're discussing mulch from a landscaper perspective, so we'll learn more about whether landscapers continue to do mulching, and there are a couple other matters before the board today.
All right, so timeout about the mulching. So, we had some questions about mulching yesterday, and I want you to clarify, because there was some debate about whether or not you were telling individuals that they shouldn't mulch, or was it landscapers shouldn't be used at this time, or were you dissuading people from going to a store that sells mulch?
Excellent question. Thanks for asking me to clarify. So, yesterday during the press brief, I was really trying to encourage people to take the stay-at-home order very serious and to avoid nonessential trips to the store. So, I don't want people to go to the store and crowd up the lines at the store to purchase mulch. Yard work is an excellent way to get some energy out and to be outside, and so if you have mulch at home, or there are some delivered, absolutely, it's safe to use mulch in the yard. We're just really trying to promote that social distancing, and that's really key here.
Got it. Comments or questions from the other commissioners? Commissioner Somer O'Dumas?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Parks?
I do, Greg, in terms of grass-cutting services. You know, somebody that will come and service my yard, is that going to be allowed? You know, so, you know, mulch isn't that the only thing involved.
So, you broke up a little bit there. If I understand the question, can lawn mowing companies continue to provide that service?
Yes.
Perfect. So, so far in Hamilton County, we have considered that an essential business for maintaining sanitation of properties. So, if grass were to get really long, it can promote the harboring of rats and other rodents, and so we have allowed that. I believe that the state would, if they were challenged on that issue, would align with our position. With each of these businesses, leading up until this point, I have worked really hard to align with the other large health departments and the other health departments surrounding us, including in Cincinnati, just so that we can be as consistent as possible.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
And can I just ask one last question related to nursing homes?
Absolutely.
I know there's been some conversation about the reporting, so can you help clarify that one?
Thank you. So, I have been in consultation with both the Hamilton County Prosecutor's Office, as well as the State Department of Health, and they have been in consultation with their legal team. Anytime that... I guess the question being posed by the media is, can we have nursing home locations where we have cases of COVID-19? And it is our strong position that we need to keep medical record information or patient information protected. And if I start giving out the address or the facility name, which then leads you to an address for a nursing home, it does start to give out protected health information. The key here is, I'm not giving out syphilis cases in nursing homes or any other medical condition in nursing homes. I guess the need for information from a public perspective, we have communicated with all of our nursing homes that there's an obligation to let families know within the nursing home if there are cases, so that the families of residents of the nursing home are aware of what's going on. So we are working closely with our nursing homes. Anytime we do have a case, I shouldn't say anywhere in the state, the state has developed a task force called a strike team that involves several key players from the State Department of Health and local health departments and the nursing homes to make sure that they have the necessary supplies to prevent rapid spread within that environment. And that includes making sure that residents are being quarantined in their rooms regardless of cases, making sure there's procedures for delivering food safely, so that employees aren't able to spread from room to room to room, and making sure protective equipment is worn in alignment with the CDC's guidelines.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you so much for the work you're doing, Greg. Please pass along the thanks of the county commissioners to your team. I know you're working night and day on this, so thank you so much for everything that you're doing.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right. Please leave your screen. I know you've got to get going, but leave your screen up there so we don't run afoul of the rules. Thank you. All right. Next, Nick Crossley is with us, the Director of the Emergency Management Agency. Nick, we had a bit of a weather event last night. Can you give us an update? I cannot hear you. Can anybody else hear you?
There we go. Sorry.
Yep.
You've got to know that by now. So, we were watching this front as it moved across Indiana, ever since it hit Indianapolis. We had a tornado watch issued at 7:25 p.m. At that point, emergency staff came into our agency's warning room and continued to monitor the front from there. At about 10:15, severe thunderstorm warning was issued. I'm sure we all heard that as we came across. So this was a really unique storm front in that it was... First of all, it was huge. Second of all, it was... It went from west to east, went from sort of the northwest to the southeast, and then it also went from the northern part of the county to the southern part of the county. So it was a large, high-wind hail event that at 10:26 p.m., 10 minutes later, the National Weather Service had a radar indicated rotation, and so they issued a tornado warning. And that was a rather large area that that tornado warning was under. And so, for that purpose, and because the whole county was basically under severe weather, our staff activated all of the outdoor warning sirens, encouraging people to take shelter, which, in the time of a stay-at-home order, was probably pretty easy. Right now, we're assessing the level of damage. A lot of the stuff we're seeing is pretty typical for these type of windstorms. We do not have a confirmed tornado. We're working with the National Weather Service, and it's actually unique this time. Due to staffing and COVID-19 concerns, the National Weather Service cannot send out teams of individuals or groups of people to do their physical assessments in the counties, and it's across multiple counties, both in Kentucky and Ohio and the eastern part of Indiana. So, they have asked us to coordinate with our local fire departments and other partners to take pictures of the damage and send it to them, so they can sort of assess, did we have any kind of low-level tornado, or was it just a straight-line wind event? So that's kind of unique to a pandemic. So they reached out to us and asked us if we could help them, and of course, all of the counties said, yes, we will. So we've sent an email to all of the... We actually... They sent out a KML file, so we were able to see which communities were affected by their estimation of the path of the wind event that they're tracking, and it was 26 communities out of our 49 communities were impacted. So we reached out to those 26 communities, asked them to take pictures for us along the storm path and send them to us. So we're waiting to gather that information right now. We'll be sharing that with the National Weather Service, and hopefully, from those high-res pictures, they'll be able to determine a straight-line wind event or if we had a low-level tornado in here. And that's what we have so far.
Great. Thank you. Are there any questions for Nick?
I have no questions. Thank you, Nick, for our...
Sure, thank you. No questions. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Nick. Thanks for the update. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Leave your video on. All right. So, Kevin Finn is with us. Kevin, can you hold on until we get to the by-leave item that you are speaking to? You're on mute right now.
If I could find the unmute. There we go. Yeah, I can hang around. It's fine.
All right. I don't think we're going to have a long agenda, so hang in there, and if we do go long, I'll call on you.
Not a problem.
But I'd like to try to get through some of the rest of this. So, we're going to move to comments and motions of the commissioners. Commissioner Somer O'Dumas?
Thank you, Madam President. Not a lot of comments, but I just wanted to say, I was on a conference call a couple hours ago with Senator Sherrod Brown, and he specifically wanted to know about our views, our concerns as it relates to affordable housing. And so, as we spoke, the homeless population came up quite a bit, and so, he's looking at trying to put more money in additional stimulus bill once and if it comes out. And so, Josh Springs was on there speaking and indicated that... And I'm sure Kevin can speak to this. The dramatic increase of those people at the pantry and also those people on the street, because maybe they've been in housing with someone else and they had to come out because of the virus. So, I'm just really excited about by-leave number 10 we'll be talking about. In addition, Madam President, I did bring up about the YWCA and Barbara Perez and the issue with housing for domestic violence families and individuals, and the need for additional funding, because she did indicate that they were running out of money. He... Sheriff Brown indicated he had talked to her a couple days ago. So I am going to ask the commission if they can consider, not today, of course, any additional funding that we could funnel to them also. I know Hamilton County does give them money already, but I just wanted to bring that before the commissioners, and that will end my report.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. You know what, Kevin? Why don't we get to you? I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself, because I think both of those issues are covered here in our by-leave item number 10. So Kevin, just so you're aware, we've got a by-leave item, I guess you know this, that is going to provide the funding that we spoke about to rehouse people. So can you respond to what you just heard and talk a little bit about the by-leave item if you can?
I apologize. I do not have the document in front of me at this moment, so if I seem a little off-topic, that might be why. We don't have... Everything anecdotally is that there are more people on the street, as Commissioner Demoss was saying, so... But, you know, also, our street outreach workers are a little limited in how much outreach they're permitted to do at this point due to the outbreak of the virus. So, we don't have firm data to back it up yet, but all indications are that there are more people on the street. We have a lot of moving parts right now. There is about a half a million dollars coming from the state for homelessness prevention activities. There obviously is the funding that the county is considering for... related to rehousing people who are homeless, as well as supporting the hotel motel work that organizations are doing. And those are only the pieces that we've heard of so far. The city has also received an allocation stimulus funding, and in comparison to the county is not moving nearly as quickly to get those dollars allocated into the community, so we always appreciate the fact that the county is willing to move quickly. But there are a lot of moving parts right now, and some of them are things that are happening just at different times than usual. We always see an uptick in family homelessness when school gets out through summer. So typically, that's the end of May and into June. While we do believe we're seeing some of that, what we refer to as the summer surge now, because effectively, school is out for summer. So, you know, we're seeing things happen at times of year that they don't normally happen. We're seeing a lot of dynamics we've not seen in the system before, but we're also seeing resources being put on the table that normally aren't available.
Great, thank you. Can you also illuminate a little bit? Because when we talked about the rehousing of the individuals, the funding that's going to be voted on today by the commission, my understanding is some of that is for families, some of it's for individuals, and some of those individuals and families are victims of domestic violence. And so, can... Do you have information related to that, Kevin?
So, the criteria of who is eligible for HUD-funded rapid rehousing, which is what that is, since it's HUD emergency assistance grant dollars passing through the county, is the people who are eligible are people who are residents of an emergency shelter or are sleeping unsheltered on the street or are fleeing domestic violence. So those are the people who would be considered homeless and would be eligible for those programs. We do have about $7 or $8 million a year of rapid rehousing programs operating in Hamilton County every day. This is an increase in the level of funding we would have for that, but rapid rehousing is something that happens throughout.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Somer O'Dumas, I hope that helps a little bit by way of information.
Yeah, it did help. Thank you so much, Kevin. I was wondering about the ability to funnel any monies to the YWCA specifically, just what Kevin is doing, but what Ms. Perez is also doing. So we can look at that.
We... With the annual allocation of funding from HUD that we receive, the YWCA is one of the organizations that is currently funded. They have both their shelter, they have transitional housing, and they have rapid rehousing that are funded currently. But these dollars...
Through you.
Yes, these dollars could... Well, it's HUD dollars that we made, so through HUD. But these are dollars that the YWCA could access to expand on their current capacity.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Parks, related to this agenda item, this is by-leave item number 10. Do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve. Jeff? Yeah?
Yeah, Madam President, if I could, if you were planning to act on by-leave 10, technically, by-leave 3 actually needs to be acted on first, because that includes the appropriation for this. So we need to appropriate the dollars technically before a contract can be approved.
That's right. All right. Well, let's hold for a second, because I know that includes more than just this.
Correct, right.
Okay, thank you. So Kevin, thank you. Thank you for all of the information. All right. So, back to the agenda then. Commissioner Parks, any questions or comments?
Just one comment. Last night, I was on a conference call that was sponsored by the NAACP and BET. Really interesting. Spoke with Speaker Pelosi, Representative Jim Claiborne, and Karen Bass was on. They were addressing the coronavirus and the fact that they are from Washington, they are requesting racial profile of how the virus is affecting communities of color. So that will help us, you know, as it trickles down. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And I don't... Greg cut out for me when he was talking. We are starting to collect that information. Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. So, I only have a couple comments. I want to thank everybody that has been working on our response to COVID-19, whether it's the Health Department, or 911, or emergency management, or internal budget staff. I mean, everybody is working on how we respond to this crisis, and so I just want to put a big shout-out to staff for everything that they're doing and to the broader community for stepping up, because from all indications, we are flattening the curve, and that's the good news. We've got some indications that that's a pretty dramatic flattening of the curve, and I think we're going to learn more about that in upcoming days. We do have some difficult decisions ahead, that said, related to our budget and the decrease, particularly when it comes to sales tax and fees and some of our other revenue sources. So, we reached out to department heads and other elected officials to give us their best ideas and strategies to come up with, you know, less spending from all of the above. John Bruegen, I know, is on, and he has been collecting that information, so more to come on that, but we're... It's going to be difficult, and we're heading into some pretty challenging times. So, I appreciate all the work that's been done there. We're still trying to... And in that context, trying to figure out, you know, what is the impact to the budget? What are the... What does the model tell us? And the federal dollars, how do they play into this? And at this moment in time, our understanding is that the first round of stimulus dollars cannot be used for this purpose, but we will be advocating for the next round to hopefully provide some relief to some of the folks that are doing... You know, they're doing work. They're still working for the county, but we can't afford to keep them on, you know, throughout the crisis entirely. So, nothing, you know, nothing definitive there, but I do want people to know that that is being worked on, and more to come on that. Jeff, do you have any... Or John, do you have anything else to add to that? Okay. I'm going to take that as a no. So, Jeff, I'm going to turn to you for comments as well.
Sure, thank you, Madam President. And I was going to weigh in just very briefly, but I couldn't get myself unmuted, so I apologize for that. But nothing significant. I think you framed the last issue very well. Did just also want to thank all staff who are working really hard under a lot of pressing and trying circumstances right now, and we are doing everything we can to try to, as you indicated, avoid anything more of an impact than we have to do. So we're looking at a lot of different angles, including federal relief, although, as you indicated, right now, we don't have anything really to report in that regard. We continue to work with our local delegation and the broader federal delegation on trying to get some relief there. So, definitely more to come on it, but we are working hard to try to alleviate the impact, not just to our employees, but also to the public, given that every employee that's working for this organization is in some way providing or supporting a vital public service. So we want to make sure we do everything we can to ensure we can continue to that. So, with that in mind, as it relates to the broader COVID-19 issue and crisis we're facing, and as it relates to county staff, I did just want to inform the board that today I had a conversation with Robert Bell, who leads up our diversity and inclusion effort, and Commissioner Dreyhouse, I think, earlier on today, you, or perhaps it was Greg Kesterman, who had indicated... Or, and maybe it was Commissioner Parks, talking about the issue of COVID-19 and the recent news about the degree to which this virus is impacting some of our minority communities, as well as the... Some of the challenges that we have faced trying to reach some hard-to-reach populations in the county with some of the messaging around the public health messages we're trying to promote as it relates to COVID-19. So today, I talked with Robert, and I formally re-designated him and repurposed him towards a COVID-19 response. I've talked with Commissioner Kesterman, as well as Nick Crossley, and indicated that Robert would be essentially communicating with them to help, on behalf of the county, work to drive that message with not just the minority communities in Hamilton County, but any hard-to-reach population in the county, to make sure that we're finding new ways to... And better ways to communicate the public health message through all corners of the county. So, I thank Robert for his flexibility on this. This is a different role than he signed up for, but Robert is a very skilled communicator and has great contacts in this community. I think will do great things in that regard. So, that is just one effort, and a broader effort, that we're going to be taking to repurpose some staff and redeploy some staff towards this COVID... Responding directly to COVID-19. I'll have more to report to the board on that in days, but I did just want to let the board... Make the board aware of this one, just due to its very specific impact on the board, make the board aware of this one, just due to its very specific impact on the problem. So happy to answer any questions if the board has them. Otherwise, that concludes my by leave comments. There are a significant number of by leave agenda items, which I'd also be happy to walk through.
Thanks. Jeff, any questions for Jeff related to that item?
I have no questions.
Just one comment that is brilliant. I love it. And I think that it will be significant in getting the word out to communities of color, minorities. That's great.
Yeah, agreed. All right, Jeff, let's go ahead and let's get to by leaves.
Okay. So the by leaves are listed at the end of your agenda. The first by leave, and I do have Frank Spataro on the line, this is a resolution approving the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and APSME Local 1768, representing various JFS classifications. The board has had some discussion on this in past executive sessions. We certainly are available to answer any questions. The administration recommends approval. And again, Frank Spataro is on the line if we want to have some more discussion on it.
Any questions or comments?
I have no questions.
No questions. Thank you.
Going to move that we approve of the resolution approving the tentative collective bargaining agreement between Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, Job and Family Services, and APSME Local 1768, representing various JFS classifications.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Semardumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number two there, Jeff.
Item number two, this is a, so as the board is well aware, the federal government has been moving rapidly to respond to the coronavirus and COVID-19 crisis. One of the things that they have done through their legislative actions is passage of the Federal Families First Coronavirus Response Act. That takes, that takes for the time period April 4th through the end of the year, and includes some provisions that require the modification of our personnel policies in order to implement them, including the addition of 80 hours of paid sick leave and the modification of our FMLA allocation or FMLA policy under the board. So in order to make our policy consistent with federal policy and to make sure we can be as flexible for our employees as need be, as the board is aware, we had authorized an emergency leave provision which expired on April the 3rd. This would now pick up retroactive to April 4th and run through the end of the year and ensure that our employees have access to that modified FMLA coverage, but also the additional 80 hours of paid leave related to COVID, for COVID, various COVID-19 rationales. So the administration does recommend approval. Frank, is there, is there anything I missed on this that you would want to weigh in on?
No, you covered it very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commissioners?
No questions.
No questions.
Very good. I'm going to move that we approve of the resolution adopting employee leave provisions provided in the Federal Families First Corona Response Act for the time period of April 4th through the December 31st, 2020, to include paid sick leave provided in the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act and the Emergency Family and Medical Leave Expansion Act.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Semardumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
All right, item number three.
Thank you, commissioners. Just real quick, if I could digress, I do want to thank Frank and all of his staff. We are doing what amounts to, and this goes to, for John and his staff too, we're, we're doing what amounts to an entire budget and a, some major revisions to our personnel policies, and just a ton of HR work that normally we would, we would, it would be a lot of work over six-month period of time that we're, that we've compressed into a couple of weeks here. So I do want to thank all of the enterprise offices, budget, HR, purchasing facilities, for all of the work they're doing, and some of that has materialized in by leave item two that the board just passed. So I want to thank Frank for that specifically. By leave item three is a budget adjustment, budget adjustment number 13, 10.89 million for COVID-19 response and emergency management. The board should have this budget adjustment in front of them. It includes addition of funds to non-departmentals for medical supplies and other supplies related to COVID-19 response. It includes a supplemental appropriation for some of our communication work in this regard. There is some supplemental appropriation here for the operations of our emergency management center, or emergency operations center up on Radcliffe Drive. This also does include the appropriate, the specific appropriation for contractual services related to emergency shelter rooms, as well as the Federal CARES Act Emergency Shelter Grant Award of $1 million. There's also included in here the, the early draw request for Union Terminal of 6.94 million, that in turn allows them to relieve themselves of some debt, construction debt on the Union Terminal project, which frees up around $500,000 annually of operating cash for them, which is obviously, as we discussed last time, which you probably by now seen in the media, is extremely important to them in terms of Union Terminal remaining as viable as they can financially during this crisis period. So I know John is on the line. If there's any other questions on this, happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments?
Madam President, I had a few questions that the Finance Director, John Brugan, has already answered, so I have no additional comments.
Okay.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I am going then to move that we approve of budget adjustment number 13, 10.89 million for COVID-19 response and emergency management.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Semardumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
All right, Jeff, talk to us about the next items.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. So items four, five, six, and seven, by leave items four, five, six, and seven, we are going, I'm going to suggest we continue to hold, I believe at the last meeting, we had talked about the administration working with our stadium and parking department to look at all of these projects and all of these suggested purchases within the context of our anticipated reduction in sales tax revenues. I can tell you that from my perspective, from the perspective of Joe Feldkamp, our Director of Stadium and Parking Operations, we think these are critical projects and purchases to make, but we just need to make certain that to the best of our knowledge, we have a strategy for keeping everything and all of our funds viable. So we know there's vendors out there who have prepped and responded to our, to big packages, who are waiting for this work to begin, and I've communicated with some of them. The, again, the county just needs to ensure before it makes an award that it is part of a viable long-term strategy, given the reduction that we are seeing in our, in our revenues. So I hope to be in a position next week to recommend a final strategy on these, and I appreciate the board's patience as we continue to walk through it.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. Yeah, I had asked Jeff to contemplate holding these. You know, these are all stadium fund dollars, these are not general fund dollars. That said, the stadium fund is going to see a reduction because of the reduction in sales tax revenue. And so I'm hoping that in short order, and I know it's challenging because there's a delay in the modeling for sales tax, because we've got a delay in those collections, but you just need to make sure that we can afford these moving forward. And as Jeff describes them, they are infrastructure, you know, kind of critical improvements to county assets. So I understand the importance of doing these to make sure that these facilities are safe for the public as we begin to reopen. However, we are in a difficult time here, and so I personally wanted a little bit more assurance that the stadium fund can, you know, withstand not only these items, but any items moving forward. And so I, too, appreciate the patience of the administrator and the vendors that are poised to deliver these services, just, and I hope commissioners, that, you know, the approach, that we hold it for one more week, we'll take these two, these items collectively when we get more of an overview about that fund in and of itself, and whether or not it makes sense at this moment in time to advance these items. So I appreciate the deference and am, you know, open to comments and questions about any of these items.
Thank you, Madam President. I certainly agree with you, and I want to thank Jeff and John for their due diligence in this area.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. All right, so we will hold for one week these four items, knowing that we're going to get some additional information about that fund. We're on to by leave item number eight.
By leave items, let's see, number eight and nine are both, by leave items eight and nine are both items under the County Engineer. I believe by leave item eight refers to the purchase of cabin chassis replacements related to snow and ice season. I believe by leave item nine is related. I think Eric Beck may be on the line. I would refer to Eric for a more comprehensive explanation.
Thank you, Jeff. Yes, the by leave number eight for the international dump trucks are a portion of what we need for our snow and ice operations. This is just for the cabin chassis portion. Once we order those, it takes a couple of months to get those made, and then once they're made, then we need to go to contract to get the beds and the salt, and the brine, and the calcium distribution systems put on, which could take up to another six months. We've done, gone through our budget, we feel that we have the funds to carry this. We need to be able to have these ready for snow and ice season next year, or I guess it would be this year. We're currently running on a 25-year cycle for replacement of these dump trucks that we use for snow and ice. We have 54 snow routes and 57 trucks, so it doesn't leave us much extra space for breakdowns. And we feel that this is important to move forward so that we're prepared for next winter.
And to clarify, these are, these dollars are coming from the Road and Bridge Fund.
That is correct.
Talk to us about that, Eric.
The Road and Bridge Fund obviously is funded by license plate fees and in part by gasoline tax. We're, we realize that the license plate fees are going to be deferred, so we don't see a drop coming, there will be a lag while it's deferred, but obviously everybody's going to renew their license, but we will continue to receive that fee, it just will be later in the year. We've dropped a couple of other equipment purchases so that we make sure that we get these funded, and we feel we're in good shape with the funds that are coming in to be able to cover this.
Okay. Thank you. So different than the items we just held, of course. All right, are there any comments or questions related to these two items?
No comments.
No comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Then I'm going to move that we approve of the resolution number P044-20 authorizing the purchase of three 2021 international dump trucks as replacements on behalf of the Hamilton County Engineer, and the resolution number P045-20 accepting one purchase order of Hamilton County and authorizing its execution and release, Southeastern Equipment Company, Inc.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Semardumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. And by leave 10 is the final item. This is resolution number seven. This is a $600,000 agreement with strategies to end homelessness. This is a, so we're going to break these, these agreements into two. This is the first, the $600,000 specifically relates to the appropriation of indigent care levy dollars. We will have an additional contract with strategies next week that will relate to the Emergency Solutions Grant funding. We had hoped to have both of them today. We want to be extra conservative. There's been some, some apparent conflict between the legislation of the CARES Act that appropriated the additional Emergency Solutions Grant, which appeared to eliminate the need for a public comment period as it relates to changing the consolidated plan or the action plan of the county as it relates to the ESG funding. The direction from HUD that came out as the agency implementing that appeared to have different language that still required the five-day public notice process. So in order to be completely conservative and make sure that we are, in fact, doing a valid contract, we wanted to provide that five-day notice period, which Community Development has already done, has already noticed, that will be completed in time for a contract approval next week. But in the meantime, we can still move forward with the portion of the funding that we are advancing, which is the Indigent Care Balance Levy funding, which again, I would like to say, we are very hopeful that that money will be reimbursed from Federal Care Act funding once we get it. The specific legislation for the CARES Act indicated that those funds could be used for any purpose that was, that occurred between March 1st of this year and December 31st. So we are very hopeful that those dollars can be offset with CARES Act funding. We did though, even prior to knowing that the CARES Act was going to be allotted, I worked with Lisa Webb to do an evaluation of our various levy balances, to see what we might be able to use towards purposes like this, and this was, was the, at the time, the, what we had come up with. So I'm very comfortable in recommending this particular contract, resolution number seven, $600,000 authorizing the administrator to enter into an agreement with strategies to end homelessness for the, the shelter redeployment program that we described earlier through, through the conversation with Mr. Finn.
All right, so just to bring a little bit of clarity to that then, so the 1.1 million is being split in two. We've got some of it in front of us here today by way of this resolution. We hope to have the rest of it next week, also by way of a resolution, and so, and these are either by way of direct dollars or reimbursed dollars, all coming from the federal government.
Correct.
All right. Any questions or comments?
Madam President, just, I'm just really excited that we are able to allocate some money toward the homeless population, so thank you.
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to move that we approve of resolution number seven, $600,000 authorizing the county administrator to enter into an agreement with strategies to end homelessness.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Semardumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. Kevin, thank you for being on. Please stay on, leave your video on, even if you're leaving your seat so that we don't get fouled up by way of our...
I would like to thank you all for the support. It's very much appreciated, and Jeff also, for all the work he's put in on this.
Thank you. Thanks for all the work that you do, Kevin.
Thank you.
And your partner agencies. All right, we are going to now move to our regular agenda. We've got two engineer items that are still with us. Eric, could you explain these items?
Yes, thank you. And I would like to echo, I'd like to thank all the commissioners, the administrator, and all your staff, for the hard work you've done to keep the county moving forward. It's really appreciated. And just to fill you in, our crews have been out since about midnight last night doing storm cleanup. Bayfield Township was hit pretty hard, and we've got some mutual aid going to them to help them with some cleanup trees and such like that. So we are out there continuing to do the work of the county. Item number one is awarding of the, the contract from Sheed Road Bridge. This was bid early in February, previously approved, so we're recommending that that's awarded to the Luveter, which was a Bruce Construction Company. And then item number two is the action required to... And then item number two is the action required to go ahead and record and vacate the right-of-way that was done by hearing last week where we commission-approved the vacation of the right-of-way for Remington Road.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
I have no questions.
No questions. Thank you.
I'm gonna move that we approve of regular agenda items numbers one and two.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somardumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but we have pulled item number 13.
Yes, or I would suggest that we hold it for one week, that's the resolution accepting lowest investment for the banks. These are, well, they're splitting into two different trade contracts, and I believe Phil Beck is on the line if we need some additional clarification, but Trade Contract 9, which is the larger of the two, is ultimately anticipated to be a pass-through from Cincinnati Parks. Trade Contract 10 is additional public infrastructure work on the banks that is largely funded from state grants and prior project rollover dollars. There is some amount noted and anticipated to be reimbursed from parking revenue bonds, but again, just as we've worked through so many of our other special funds, and we have some communication work to do with different parties on this, we just thought it was better just to hold for one week for reasons elucidated earlier as it relates to just a review of all of our funds and projects. So I would anticipate bringing this forward with the recommendation to approve next week, but with all of our major projects, we just think it's important that we are very diligent at this time and looking at all of our sources and uses.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about holding that item for a week?
No questions.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any...
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm sorry, just for clarity, I'm sorry, this is Jackie. We held these agenda items, for the by leave items, four, five, six, and seven, and I believe the intent was that that would be, those would be held one week. Am I to place those on the April 16th agenda, or are we doing this by leave? And likewise with this item 13, hold one week. I don't know if you want me to place that on in consideration again, or if you need more additional information. I'm just asking for clarity purposes, so I know what the board is asking.
I have no preference here, so why don't we put them on the regular agenda next week? All of the by leave items and this one?
Okay.
Okay. All right, so any other questions related to the consent agenda?
I have no questions.
No questions. Thank you.
All right, so I'm then gonna move that we approve of consent agenda items three through 12, and 14 through 16.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somardumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. I have nothing more in front of me. Jeff, do we have anything else we need to take care of today?
Nothing else from the administration.
All right, commissioners, anything else?
Madam President, I didn't know if you wanted to bring up about the census.
Ah, that's a great one. Yes, of course, everyone should be, as you sit at home, everyone, please fill out the census. I did mine, I don't know if you two have done yours, but it took me six minutes to fill out the census. It was so easy, easiest thing I've done online ever, and we need to make sure we're counted. All these federal dollars that we just talked about are all related to population, and so if we don't get counted, we don't get those dollars to the degree we should. So it is critically important that we fill out our census, and also, don't forget to vote. So any, I thank you for the prompt, I appreciate that. Anything else?
I have nothing.
I was just gonna remind everybody to vote. Don't forget, it is a two-step process, because I really like voting on election days, but I didn't get it done this year. And so I called and got the application, it came today, I'm going to send it in and wait for my ballot, and then send that back in.
I know.
It is a two-step process, but take the two steps. That's all.
Thank you. And do it as soon as possible, because it's a two-step process. Right, yeah. Thank you. Thank you both. All right, everybody stay safe, stay home. All right, thank you. I'm gonna move that we adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somardumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, take care, everybody.
Take care.